Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 24, 2022. Meeting announcements, due to staffing shortages, virtual attendance is unavailable this week for council meetings and public hearings. The public comment will need to be in person or submitted via email to the City Clerk's Office at Pittsburgh PA, at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Please note that council meetings will continue to be livestreamed on the city's website. And we hope everybody in IMP who records our meetings, we hope they all have a speedy recovery. Will the clerk please take the roll call?
Reverend Burgess.
I'm here.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is amended. Our next order of business is proclamations, and I have three to be presented. First, we're going to begin with the Special Deployment Division. Commander, will you and your team please come forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come up here. Yep. So I'm just going to say, I was really happy when Commander Ripple became a commander, and even happier that he became a commander over the Special Deployment Division. Pardon me? Then come up here.
Right.
Yeah. And I just, just to say, if you ever know what this department does for the city of Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, they're the ones when you see the horses on the streets with, in the community groups, they're the ones when the kids are taking motorcycle rides, they're the ones that have SWAT and Bomb Squad. And I'll get into the proclamation, but they do a lot of the services that you see at community groups and community events, a lot of the events, you can see kids running towards them instead of away. So it's an amazing thing to see. So I want to thank you for your service, but I'm going to read the proclamation. And you can, after we're done, you can introduce everyone you have with you and say a few words. Okay. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh Special Deployment Division, SDD, of the Bureau of Police, consists of the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, the Bomb Squad, K-9 Unit, the Mounted Patrol, River Rescue, SWAT, Traffic Division, and the Public Safety Planning Unit. That's a lot. And whereas, SDD provides specially trained and equipped officers citywide, as well as for the Region 13 of the Department of Homeland Security. And they work closely with the federal, state, and local law enforcement. And whereas, each unique set of officers are highly trained to deal with specialized issues such as, but not limited to, hazardous materials and devices, patrolling the Three Rivers, search and rescue, hostage situations, collision investigations, in ensuring the safety of residents at events within the city of Pittsburgh. And whereas, in addition to highly trained K-9 officers, are utilized for unique situations such as searching for endangered people, electronic sniffing to locate computer chips, and detecting drugs and/or explosions. And where, explosives. And whereas, the Special Deployment Division is committed to working hand-in-hand with the community, which is evident in their participation in the countless community events, which is building stronger and stronger police-community relationships throughout the city of Pittsburgh. Under the direction of Chief Schubert, prior Commander Clarence Trapp, and current Commander Ray Ripple, SDD sends mounted horses, the Bomb Squad, SWAT, and the K-9 Unit to the community events and to city parades, all while focusing on public safety. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Special Deployment Division of the Bureau of Police, and thank its unsung heroes of law enforcement, and acknowledge their tremendous work in the building police community relations. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 24, 2022, to be Special Deployment Division Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Do you have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you. You can say a few words. This is for you and your teams. If you need more, let us know. Here, say a few words. You're a little bit taller than me.
Thank you, Council, Council President. It's an honor to be here and receive this award for doing what we all love to do. I'm very fortunate enough that I became the commander of SDD and giving back to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, and with these events is an honor for me, and I'm sure the other officers. This is Officer Walt Jones, Officer Amber DeFranco, Lieutenant Charles Henderson, he's Lieutenant of SDD. So the two officers here are with the Mounted Unit. Unfortunately, as a specialized unit, we're called all the time, and we had a dignitary come in, so all the cycles and the SWAT guys and EOD had to attend that, to handle that matter. But again, I really appreciate it, President Smith. It's an honor to receive this award, and we keep doing it and being tight with the community and making everything work.
Thank you.
Hello, Walt Jones. I've been with the city for 21 years and spent two-thirds of that with the SDD. Spent 10 years in the K-9 Unit and about three and a half here with the Mounted. Love working with animals and have a lot of experience doing it.
Well, I'm Amber DeFranco. Thank you again for this recognition. We greatly appreciate it. We absolutely love what we do. We couldn't, we couldn't do what we do if we didn't have that desire, that, you know, the heart that we have to work with the animals. I've been with the city for 12 years now, and this is definitely the most rewarding unit that I've ever, I've ever worked with. The things that we are privileged to do every day, we're just so grateful to be able to do it and work in the capacity that we do. So I want to thank you all again very much. Thank you.
(applause). Mr. Trump, will you make him come forward? Okay, will all the members please come forward?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. 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 And be safe, everyone.
You have a question? When you have a question, just go ahead. That's what my office does.
Does anyone know where Bill Urbannick is?
Bruce, that was really nice the other night.
Bill Urbannick?
And you did really well. Thank you.
Is Director Urbannick?
Turns out I grew up with.
We need Director Urbannick and Manager Stralik, please come out. Please come out. Thank you.
No, there are such a good group.
We're going to do you second, you first. So I'm just going to say, yeah, he's saying that now. So you might know that the Budget Office in the city of Pittsburgh does a tremendous job with everything they do in the city of Pittsburgh. We have our City Council Budget Office, who does an amazing job. They don't have to report to one person, they report to nine, all our staff and the Clerk's Office, and they work with everyone, to be honest with you. And just come up with nine different people, have all different opinions, and yet manage to stay here for so long is amazing. And I just want to thank them because they got us through some of the most difficult times. But we have one retiring and one moving on to a different job. So with that said, we're going to start with Mike Stralik, but I first want to give Bill Urbannick and Mike Stralik an applause and maybe a standing ovation for the times that they spent here. Thank you. Thank you. I want to make it clear that they got this city through Act 47, a pandemic, and so much more that is unbelievable. And we can invite your family and friends forward. We'll begin with Mike Stralik's proclamation. And we have our former President Doug Shields here with us today. Thank you, Councilman Shields. Scott, former director, he's, he's spent the time here too, on both sides, correct?
It's all good trouble, man. Deja vu.
I was going to say, Councilman Shields is here still running the show. Whereas, Mike Stralik began with the city of Pittsburgh in 2007 as an intern for City Council President Doug Shields. A year later, he stayed, that's the big one, a year later, a year later, he began working in the City Council Budget Office as budget technician, and quickly moved up the ranks to his current position as budget manager, where he has been for over five years. And whereas, Michael has, has earned his bachelor's degree in history and political science from the University of Pittsburgh, and a master's degree in public policy and management from the University of Pittsburgh Graduate School of Public and International Affairs. And whereas, Mr. Stralik's worked behind the scenes, Mr. Stralik worked behind the scenes on numerous budget projects that navigated the city through some of the most difficult financial times, such as in 2009, wait a minute, that's when I was elected, such as in 2009, when he assisted the Budget Director in crafting the parking asset for the pension plan that saved the city, the pension, the parking authority, the pension fund, and will save residents over $3 billion through 2040. And whereas, Michael helped guide Pittsburgh through multiple Act 47 plans before the city finally emerged from multiple layers of state oversight in 2018 during the COVID pandemic. Mr. Stralik helped navigate the city through an unprecedented loss of revenue without any layoffs, working with ourselves and with Mayor Pududa at the time, without any layoffs or significant cuts in services beyond services cut due to health protocols such as closing recreation centers. And whereas, throughout his tenure, Mike has worked on 15 budgets totaling over $9 billion, and also helped evaluate and draft legislation and codes such as governance changes, and revised cooperation agreements with the city of Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority, and the rewrite of the city's procurement code. And whereas, he has always been a quick wit, sometimes too quick, and displayed a talent for translating extremely complicated topics into easily understood concepts. Mr. Stralik will be leaving the city to pursue a career as the Township Manager for Ligonier Township. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Mike Stralik for his 14 and a half years of service to the City, to City Council and to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 24, 2022, to be Mike Stralik Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Can I have a motion to? Motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you, Mike, for everything, mostly for tolerating us. I mean, I know, I know we can be very challenging, I know myself especially, so I want to thank you for all that you've done. Ligonier is so, so fortunate to have you coming. Do you want to come up and say a few words? And then we'll let council members say a few words, and Councilman Shields, and your boss.
Thank you for this, and when I come back in a couple months or years begging for a job, I'm going to use this as my resume.
(laughter) I don't know what I would have done if I wouldn't have stolen Mike off
of Council President Shields at the time. Mike, we were partners in crime, so to speak, for a lot of, for a lot of years. And without his talent, which developed over the years, and he became a fine analyst and a great budget manager, and a great assistant, and a great asset to the city. So, Mike, thank you. And thank you for being a friend of mine.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of council, it's really a pleasure to be back here today. It's been a while. And this chamber is so beautiful, it just gets me wild. I hear this vacancy might come up too, but never mind. Congratulations, Michael. Bill Urbannick was a good eye for talent, stole my employee right off from underneath me. He was shirt-handed, he said, can I borrow Mike? He knew how to add, he had a calculator and everything, and he made his career here, and made his bones in Pittsburgh City Council. Both of these gentlemen are incredibly important to us all. I see Scott Kunka was here today too, he's sitting down. These people saved the city. The council makes the decisions, but without the information to make a cogent decision in the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh, you can't do it unless you know your numbers. And those three gentlemen knew their numbers, and they helped guide us through one of the most difficult times in the city of Pittsburgh's history, and that was when we went into Act 47. And we did have to lay off. We laid, we got rid of 1,000 positions, 800 and some employees, and we worked real hard to bring this city back, and it did. And we, we did a great job, and some of you were here then, and some of you continued that legacy of minding the business of the city. And without Mike Stralik and the help, and the direction of Bill Urbannick, we would not have made it. And Mr. Kunka as well, the former Budget Director. So thank you all for allowing me this free moment to say hello to all of you and be back in this gorgeous chamber, and to really given the opportunity to thank some really wonderful people, and Mike Stralik and my dear friend, Bill Urbannick. Wendy got a good one. Thank you.
I'm going to read Budget Director Urbannick's, and then we'll let members of council, y'all, say something and come up for photos. Whereas, Bill Urbannick grew up in Scott Township, and then he wised up and moved to the city of Pittsburgh. And then moved to the city of Pittsburgh neighborhood of Duquesne Heights in District 2, I might add, to attend Duquesne University. It is there where he earned his bachelor's degree in political science and government electronic media, and he met his lovely wife, who also runs 311 and works with, does an amazing job there as well, and we all love, is Wendy Urbannick, his lovely wife of 35 years. Well, you deserve a medal. I'm going to give you a proclamation. And whereas, Mr. Urbannick got his first glimpse of government in July 1989, when, after he assisted Councilwoman Michelle Madoff with her campaign. He worked in her council office. He was one of the first council aides to have a computer, that is unbelievable, he was one of the first council aides to have a computer, that he put, that he put into working, into use, working on several pieces of legislation, including, but not limited to, cities' noise ordinance, aging issues, and bond regulations. And whereas, after Michelle left office, he accepted a chief of staff position with Councilman Joe Cusick. While serving council, he worked towards a master's degree in public administration from Carnegie Mellon, Carnegie Mellon University, Heinz School of Public Policy and Management. In November of 1997, Bill left the city to work for Allegheny County Commissioner Mike Dewita as a senior administrator. In October of 1999, Bill returned to the city of Pittsburgh as a senior budget analyst for City Council, and worked on the city's first Act 47 plan and legislation to eliminate the social security offset, which all the city of Pittsburgh is so grateful for, the employees. And whereas, in 2006, Bill became the Council Budget Director and assisted in putting together the subsequent Act 47 plans, created the concept of the parking asset for the pension, and helped codify the fiscal practices, best fiscal practices, with his colleague, Mike Stralik. And whereas, Bill enjoys working with people and educating them on how the government budget works. Besides the annual, annual budget overview, when City Council held open forums, he would give a budget presentation to the community, and he assisted the administration in creating transparency by eliminating, by implementing tools such as Fiscal Focus, which enabled constituents to view where the funds are spent. And whereas, Mr. Urbannick has worked with 54 different council members throughout his career, that is like unbelievable, and he stayed. Upon retirement, Bill looks forward to long walks with his, with his dog and his favorite, at his favorite stop, at the Washington Gaiusu statue, and spending more time with his wife, Wendy, and their three kids, Bill, Frank, and Becky. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Mr. Urbannick for the years of service to the City, to City Council, and congratulate him on his retirement, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 24, 2022, to be Bill Urbannick Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Bill, I want to thank you for, for all that you've done, and I know council members are eager to say a lot of things, but I want to give you a chance to say a few words, and Scott, and former Councilmember Shields. Wendy, do you want to say something?
I'll put her in the spot.
Okay, here, you get up and say a few words first. You're first. It's your day.
Thank you, Council President Smith. I want to thank all the members of council here. I, I love all you guys. You all have, everybody, all those 54 members of council that I served with and under and for, all have different talents. They all taught me along the way, and, and gave me a lot of, a lot of compassion. I have to say, Michelle Madoff, of course, being my first introduction into this world, but before that, it was actually Jimmy Furlough, who I had, had worked, campaigned for. The way Jimmy Furlough passed away, and I protested in that cemetery with about 250 other people to, to bring him to his final resting place. Jimmy's the reason why I came back to, to the city after, after working in the Commissioner's Office. I wanted to leave town. Jimmy said, no, I want you back, and I want you to be in the Budget Office. Mr. Kunka, who was the Budget Director at the time, I don't know if he wanted me or not, but Jimmy wanted me to, to come there, and I guess he capitulated at the time. So, yeah, it's, it's been a long ride. I had a great time. There's just so many friends and family, work family, that I have over the years, and that was the interesting thing, is seeing a lot of the older folks, Steven Bruder, Abbas, Kamara, and just so many other, other staff and friends. My friend Sean Carter, Sean and I go back a ways as well too. Reverend, thank you for the personal stuff. You know, different things happen in your life, and Reverend has been there for me, you know, on a, on a personal basis at different times, so I appreciate it, all that you did on that. Corey, your dad was fantastic, and he would be so proud of you right now. I'm sorry, I'm starting to lose it a little bit. Yeah, I don't know where I'll go. Every morning, after 33 years.
My office for coffee.
Yes, I will have to come up and get coffee from Bruce. I do love all you guys. I love the body, I love the organization. I love the building block of democracy that it was, that, that is here. I even love, I love Avon F. Brown and the other speakers that come in here. It's, it's important. It's important to have that, have folks speak in the dialogue. The community is who we serve, and that's who these folks taught me to serve in the long run. It's not, it's not special interests, not this or that. It's the citizens and residents of the city. Scott Kunka was one of those that taught me that, Jim Furlough, Michelle Madoff, all of you guys. So just thank you, and I'm going to be fine, I'm going to have a great time. I'm going to relax, take a couple months off, I may do something else, who knows? We'll see. But once again, thank you. I love you all. And I can't forget my beautiful wife and family, if she has been a budget widow for the last 23 years. And Mr. Lavelle, Councilman Lavelle, Finance Chair, and Dan Friedson too. One of the things that's in the charter is council has the ability to fix, to change the fiscal year. I've always advocated that it be done along with the state. It will save the next folks from having to deal through the holidays without a family. So, thank you all.
On behalf of myself and the rest of the Urbannick family, I can attest to Bill's dedication, and I am so grateful for all that he's done for the city. He's certainly left a footprint that will be here for a long time. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Scott Kunka, and as Bill mentioned, I was Bill's predecessor in City Council. I held a number of positions in the city over my course, over my tenure, excuse me, but I had found that working for City Council was both the best, both the best and worst job that I've had in the city. It's a very difficult job, but it's very rewarding. You get to understand the entire cross-section of the city, all the people who make up the wonderful city that we have. And I will say regarding Bill and Mike, you're going to have a very difficult time to replace them. Please do though, because the third branch of the government, or the one of the three branches of the government, is just as important as both the Mayor's Office and the Controller's Office. And I wish Bill well, I wish Wendy well. Wendy is, you're very capable 311 manager, maybe director, I'm not sure. But anyways, thanks for having me here today. It's wonderful to be here for Bill. He has put his heart and soul into the, the operations of the City Council Budget Office, and the alteration of the fiscal year is a great idea. Let me tell you, it would work very well if he did in that fashion. But thank you very much.
Mike, do you want to say something? You can say whatever you want.
I'm back. I just want to say publicly to everybody how much I love Bill Urbannick, and Wendy, and their family. We've become great friends over the years, and what he's done for this city needs to be honored and recognized, and I thank this council for doing that. And thank you, Bill and Wendy, for all you do. Yeah, and let's move to fiscal year July. Who wants to work on a budget in Christmas time? Take care.
So when I was 14, I worked for my father, and Bill, you're the second-best boss I've ever had. It's, I never felt like I was working for him, I always felt like I was working with him, and with council. And his dedication, you could have retired and should have retired maybe 13 months ago. For your dedication to this body and to this city, it's, it's unbelievable. So, on behalf of the city, congratulations and thank you.
Members of council, do you want to say a few words? I will start with Reverend Burgess, then go to Finance Chair Lavelle, and then the rest of the members.
So, first of all, Bill and I are friends, that's not a secret. He taught me the budget of the city of Pittsburgh. Both of my council mentors are both here in the chamber. Doug Shields taught me how to be a council person, and Bill Urbannick taught me how to be a finance chair and how to understand and operate the budget. So, for both of you, I want to say thank you. Bill, I've learnt, and I want to say this, I've learnt that it is not product that we should honor, but legacy and commitment, right? In church, what I say is, you know, God does not call us to be successful, God calls us to be faithful. And over these long stretches of years, to this city, you have been faithful. To this council, you have been faithful. You have fought administrations and budget directors on the other side, but you have been faithful to this council, both you and Mike, who also, I care about, have been faithful. And we will do some things today to honor your legacy and your commitment, and all of us appreciate you. But I will say that there's a greater legacy, because when you do things that are right, there is a God who sees it and smiles, and also remembers all that you say and do. God bless you, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle.
Thank you. Excuse me. Both, Mike and Bill, you have both been invaluable to me as a council person, I believe to council as a body as a whole over the years, and to the city as a whole. I thank you for your years of service. I thank you for your invaluable education that you've provided to me over the years, informing me, educating me on the budget, helping me better understand many policies relative to the city, as well as your history. Because so often, we'd have conversations, you say, you have to understand that this happened 10 years ago, or this happened when. And so, we're going to miss that as we move forward, and your history is invaluable. Also, just want to thank you for, personally, for all that you've done for me, to work with me and help me as a finance chair. Both of you have been invaluable, so I just want to thank you for your years of service. Your history, your legacy is truly marked. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and Councilman Kraus, and then we'll go to the members.
First, good morning, Council President Emeritus, Mr. Shields. It's nice to see you in chambers again. Scott, it's nice to see you in chambers again. There might be a little revisionist history taking place here, I remember. Michael, working for the then-president, Mr. Shields, I recall him running and screaming, I think, from the office to head to the budget office, but, you know, I digress. It is good to see you both back in chambers, it really is. You know, Michael, you know, I wish you nothing but the best. We've had a good partnership, a good relationship over the years. You will surely be missed, and the, your unwavering assistance, especially when it comes to things like distributing CDBG and the ever-repopulating neighborhood needs monies that never seem to go away, but you always seem to find a way to help us spend those accounts down. So, when is your last day, Michael?
Friday.
Friday, so before Friday, we could go over neighborhood needs again and just see, just, yeah. Today, okay. We could figure out what might be left there. And Bill, you know, I just, you know, I can't imagine you not being here, you know? I mean, you, as I recall, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Dowd, myself, Doug was president, and Bill, you were finance director, and we met with you before coming in to sort of, kind of learn the positions we were about to assume and the responsibilities we were about to assume. And so, you know, your help, your support, your friendship was invaluable in helping us to get our legs and, you know, be grounded in this responsibility that we were taking on, so. But, I wish you nothing but the best. Enjoy retirement, enjoy it, and I know you will. And, you know, I joked a little bit about the coffee, I do have a bill. But we will miss you coming in for coffee every day, but so, don't be a stranger, you know? You're welcome to come in for coffee anytime, you know that. You have friends here that love you, too. So, good luck to you, and we'll miss you terrible. Thank you.
And Councilman Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to know, who let Shields in here today? I could have told you he would have come in here and taken over the joint. No, I'm just teasing, of course, Doug. I want to thank you for being here, Mr. Kunka, you know, and your legacy that you brought to this chamber as well. Let me start with you, Mr. Stralich. Mike, I got to tell you, you know, I can't thank you enough for how helpful you've been to my office. You're like a, you know, comforting blanket for us. And I will tell you, when Madam President says "quick-witted," there's a fine line between that and a smart ass, but I'm just teasing, but you're anything but that, I will say. Mike, you've been nothing but a professional. I want to thank you for helping my office as you did. Your career is just beginning, you have a stellar resume, you can count on me for a top-notch referral, no matter what you plan to do with your life, so, thank you. Mr. Urbannick, Bill, I had the pleasure of knowing Bill and Wendy before I came into this office, so my first year kind of went like, you know, Bill would come in and try to explain some of the budget stuff to me, which I was very unfamiliar with, but I want to thank you for walking me through it through all those years. You know, your legacy will live on forever down here. I really don't know what I'm going to do without the two of you. You know, I'm sure we'll have those discussions, but I want to thank you for your years of service. Wendy, I want to thank you for supporting your husband for all these years, and thank you guys for being friends, and nothing but the best. I wish you good luck. Thanks.
Councilman Wilson, go first, and then, do we have someone online or on the phone? Councilwoman Strasburg, and then we're going to save Councilman O'Connor for last, because we know there's some close relationships there.
Well, I just want to say, Mike and Bill, our time has been cut too short. You know, I think there was just a little over two years together, and I'm sitting here listening to all the great stories and all the great advice you've given over the years to members. But what I can say is that within that time, no matter what I asked, you were always right there, drawing the spot, emails came through literally minutes after I asked for a request, asked for a request of, like, you know, several different options of how to spend money and how to get things done in my district. So, you know, it's been, it's been a pleasure working with you, and, you know, I can't say enough about the work ethic and everything that you, you know, put forward. And I just want to say thank you for the, your service to City Pittsburgh.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Strasburg.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm so sorry I can't be there to join you all in person, but I wanted to just thank Bill and Mike for their years of service to the city, and just to say that one of my favorite parts of this job is introducing someone from the public, a resident of the city, to a person, and having a light bulb go off in their head, that there are people who are doing the work of the city, who truly care about the work and care about the city, and that are really making this city move along the track, you know, continue forward. And, you know, often when people meet those folks, they're park rangers, or they're folks working in public works, you know, repaving a street and really taking care to do it right. The people that they don't often get to meet are Bill and Mike, who, who carry the same amount of care and love for the city and the work that they do, but the work isn't often seen. And so, I just wanted to spotlight that and say that we know that you're the unsung heroes of the city, and we thank you for all of your years of service, and we'll celebrate it together in person at another date. Thank you.
Strong relationship, especially with Mr. Urbannick.
No, thank you, Council President, and, no, I'll begin with Michael. I think when I first started, nobody realized you have one of the better dry senses of humor in city council chambers. And, yeah, and it caught me off guard, because as council president, or former president, Kraus would say, Corey, you're kind of a wise ass, but, you know, Michael, I would say, when we talked about budget stuff, and you'd move this, move this, you always had a really smart answer back, and I appreciated that, because it balances us out, it makes it fun. You know, you have a sense of humor that will do you very well in Ligonier. I know we talked about it, it's a great little town, you'll do a great job out there. I think somebody that comes from this background to go out there and help is going to do a lot of good in that township out there. And Bill, I actually have, probably before I actually met him, I had heard his name for years. At my kitchen table, my dad would sit there, and it would probably be about 10 o'clock where, you know, normal kids should go to bed, and Doug Shields would run in and talk till about 2:30, 3:00 in the morning. And what would happen is, every so often, Doug would say, well, Urbannick has the math, Urbannick found this money, Urbannick, Urbannick, Urbannick. And it's like a mad scientist figuring out how to solve solutions. And you have done that for all of us at this table, for generations of elected officials in the city of Pittsburgh. And before I started, I actually sat down with you to get a crash course in how we could find money, how you can budget things, and I think without you, none of us would understand the budget process as well as we do. You're a friend in the office, out of the office, your family, used to play baseball with your kids. And I think, you know, Wendy, for the work that you do in the city, it's a credit to just the Urbanics in general for a lifetime of dedication to the people of Pittsburgh. And Bill, you help us get through, as you mentioned, our own personal struggles, and you're a friend all the way through, and I respected that so much, for you to be there as a friend, as a mentor, as a teacher for me throughout, you know, my 11 years on council. It means a lot, and you've done a lot of great service to a lot of people in the city, so be proud of what you've done and what you can accomplish in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, do members want to come forward for a photo? And then I think we're going to invite some of the people from the audience to come forward, too. Wait, do we have Mark De Pasquale, I see? I know you wanted to come say a few words, I apologize. Can you say, come say a few words? You serve on the pension board. Come over here, come up here. You serve on the pension board with Mr. Urbannick, Director Urbannick. And so, I just want to tell you that everyone from the pension office is asking about.
Thank you, Council President. Hi, my name is Mark De Pasquale. I serve on the regular pension board with Mr. Urbannick. He usually comes in place of the council representative. I also serve on the comprehensive municipal investment board with Mr. Urbannick. I was elected to be the employee representative two years ago, about two and a half years ago, and I wanted to get involved. I was very interested in getting involved with the offset issue, but I didn't know much what I was doing. Immediately upon getting elected, Mr. Urbannick graciously invited me to his office two or three times, and we spent sessions, him coaching me, teaching me, guiding me, and he really helped me hit my stride. He's been a great asset on both boards, he's the main reason, one of the main reasons the investments are so strong, and we work together diligently to get the offset issue up to city council, but once it was here, Bill really took it, took it on, and he's the main reason that so many employees will have a better pension and a better life as time moves on. I know both Bill and Wendy professionally from working in this building the last eight years. They're tremendous human beings, tremendous community servants, and tremendous public service, and he'll be, it'll be a great loss, but his legacy that he left behind will benefit the city for many years. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Council President.
Will all members come forward for the photo, and then we're going to see if some people in the audience want to come forward. We have our regulars that come to city council all the time, and Miss Brown's one of them, and Bill Urbannick, and Dr. Miller, if you want to come forward. And Miss Brown is one of those people that always come forward, and Mr. Urbannick appreciates, so I want to make sure she, they get a photo together. Okay, let's.
How you doing?
Nice to see you. It's always a pleasure.
Good to see you, too. You well? And here we go.
My man, how you doing? You coming up to 25th or what?
Yeah.
Okay, good to do.
Okay. Let's take it everyone, first.
I hear you, my man, I hear you, I hear you.
We have a, we'll have a reception after, after council in the back. Mr. Urbannick, can you walk him in the back? Okay, and we also have, we have proclamations to be read into the record. We have one for myself and one from Councilman O'Connor. Madam Clerk.
Presented by Councilman Corey O'Connor, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, May 20, 2022 to be Patty Reed Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
They'll move, Doug.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation is approved. And the next one?
Sponsored by Council President Kail Smith, be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, May 26, 2022 to be Major Cynthia Foster Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Be it further resolved that the council of the city of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, May 26th, 2022 to be Major Cynthia Foster Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve in a second. In favor?
Aye.
Those proclamations are approved. And our next order of business is public comment. And we have a list of registered speakers for public comment, and I apologize to those who have been waiting. But when somebody spends 33 years in the city doing all the right things, we want to make sure we give them the proper recognition.
Yeah, good job.
Our first speaker is Isabel, I'm going to spell the name, O-U-Y-A-N-G. Is she on the phone? In person? No. Okay. Cheryl Stevens. Good morning. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and good morning. 23% of Pittsburgh households do not have access to a private vehicle, according to recent census numbers. They also tell us that 50,000 residents, over 17% of city's population, uses public transit. That does not even include students, unemployed Pittsburghers, people traveling for noncommuting reasons. All add to this number, and it's even greater. For months, transit riders have dealt with service delays, service outages on transit. Riders have been waiting, often more than an hour for a bus to show up that never ends up coming. This is not acceptable, and it should not be seen as a standard in the city of Pittsburgh. If we aspire to be a world-class city, we need to meet the goal of a world-class city by providing world-class transit. That means that we need safe, affordable, and frequent connections. If transit does not show up, the city cannot run. Missed connections are missed opportunities. Employees at Giant Eagle miss hours of work. Children are unable to get home from after-school activities. That means missed birthday celebrations. I've even heard from fellow riders that they have missed interviews because the Port Authority buses never showed up. Not everyone has the privilege of being able to take an expensive ride share to get to where they need to go, or call a family member to drive them to where they need to go. These connections also allow us to travel from neighborhood to neighborhood, to spend time with friends, to go to work, to go to the park, and to the store, and to community events. While Pittsburgh is widely known, often, as a city of bridges, those bridges extend beyond concrete structures. They are the buses, the trains, that allow us to go about our daily life and make daily life possible. With that, I ask that the city council work with the Port Authority to ensure that service is restored, frequency is restored, to transit riders. Because this is a city problem, it affects city residents. Without transit, we cannot function, we cannot work. Lots of people depend on the service to do so many things in their lives, and it's critically important. I do recognize and understand that city council does not have the ultimate say over transit, but I think it is within your willpower to work with your colleagues at Port Authority to ensure that there is a plan to not only have frequency, but to expand public transit throughout the city of Pittsburgh. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Diane LeBlonsky is our next speaker. Diane LeBlonsky. Is she on the phone? No. No one's on the phone? Okay. Charlie Barron. Bonnie Finn. Lisa Gonzalez, I see. Hi, Lisa. Good morning.
Okay, good morning. My name is Lisa Gonzalez. I live in Carrick. Now, everyone that lives in the city has a car or can drive a car, so they must catch the bus, which is and has been unreliable. I am asking that the city of Pittsburgh work with Port Authority and Pittsburgh Public Schools so our children can get, can get safely to school and safely home from school, that their parents and guardians chose for them. Also, let's clear up some myths on what a person with a choice housing voucher looks like. Some work. While I am on disability, I am working towards purchasing a house. I also work in my community and my city to try to make it better for my grandchildren. There should be a, be on, be one part of the criteria when considering folks for home ownership, that they can contribute to the community and the city to make it better, and also non-reliable trans, uh, non-reliable, when you're looking to purchase a house or looking to live, the buses are not coming, who wants to live in that neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And our next speaker is Andrew Hussain. Andrew?
Not here.
Darren Lee? Darren Lee. Mel Packer. Mel, I see you.
Morning. Hang on, I'm losing my hearing aid here. Problem of being old. I'm Mel Packer. I live in Point Breeze. Couple of pertinent facts first. I'm here with Pittsburgh Public Transit. The Port Authority, we know today, owned by Allegheny County, began operating in 1964 from the acquisition and merger of 33 separate and private transit companies. It's the second-largest transit system in the state. It's the 26th largest in the nation. The population of Allegheny County is 1.2 million, and population of the city of Pittsburgh is about 300,000, meaning we have 25% of the county's population occupying 7% of the county's landmass. Now, we don't know how many of the current riders of Port Authority are city residents, but it's a safe bet, I'm sure, that a far greater percentage of city residents ride on Port Authority than does the percentage of county residents who live outside the city. Further, if we look at employment centers within the city limits, tech, eds. and meds, banking, we can likely assume that a very large percentage of those who work within the city at those industries arrive by public transit. On page 103 of May Gaye's Transition Team Report, it begins by stating that, quote, "The city should form a stronger collaborative relationship with Port Authority for improved public transit." Another suggestion was pilot a free bus program. And from that same report, quote, "Although the city does not control the system through a collaborative relationship with the Port Authority, it can make its use easier and more attractive to encourage ridership." Yet today, we have a dysfunctional transit system mired in the notion that fees must remain some of the highest in the nation, and assist in planning more cuts while failing to meet the needs of most working people, and especially low-income workers. The city of Pittsburgh cannot insist that nothing can be done because Port Authority is a county authority and controlled by an executive who is often no friend of city-elected officials. The Pittsburgh City Council, representing 25% of the county's population, has a moral and ethical responsibility to make demands of the Port Authority to make sure it serves the need of city residents. As I speak, there are more transit cuts coming. Many workers will find themselves unable to get to work on time, which could result in dismissal, or unable to get home at the end of shifts, which could result in children without care. City residents have, for the last few months, found themselves unable to count on the stated bus schedules for a variety of reasons, yet still have to somehow function as if transit is a reliable lifeline, and it is not. I'm speaking, actually, I'm insisting that this city council stand up for the residents of our city and demand that Port Authority find the means to deliver a first-class and reliable system to our first-class Pittsburgh workers. If that means standing with Port Authority and trips to Harrisburg to demand more funding, so be it. If it means finding city money to achieve better transit, so be it. If that means going after nonprofits for money for transit, and the banks for the same, then so be it. We must do it, and we must do it now. This city council should demand some say in the operation decisions of Port Authority, and should happen now, not tomorrow. We must make transit a reliable lifeline for all. Thank you.
Clara Webel is our next speaker.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Okay. Hi, my name's Clara. I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill in District 5. I'm also here today to talk about some of the bus experiences that I've had. So I live right by the movie theater in Squirrel Hill, and I work at the Environmental Charter School as a Quoro Public Allies AmeriCorps person. And I bounce around all the different buildings, and you can imagine some of those get a little bit tricky busing there. So the first one was fine for a while, the 61B taking me to South Braddock at the lower and intermediate schools. And then we had the bridge incident, and then my bus ride went from maybe three minutes to 40 minutes, especially that traffic that's on South Braddock there. So that's a little bit tough. There have been other times where I'd catch the 64, and then, of course, it just misses the 71A that I need to get to the middle school, then I have to just putter around Giant Eagle for half an hour. Also, sometimes when I'm on the way to the high school, I'll be riding the bus, I'll get there late with high schoolers. So you can kind of say what you want about like a working adult who maybe needs to manage her time better, but also like coming in with all of the tardy students. I feel like there needs to be better options for students on their way to school, and a lot of the times with buses come every half hour, X, Y, and Z, it does make it really, really difficult for city residents like me, and also students that attend school. We also go on several field trips using the bus system. There have been days where I've taken eight buses, and really, a lot of the times, the chips just drop, and we don't get to the places that we need to be. And I'm someone who uses the text method. There's a special app that you can use. A lot of the times, the bus will register just right down the street from me, and it still doesn't come. So I don't know what ends up happening, but it does seem like we really need the city council to work together with Port Authority and the county to help us and step up through these quarterly service cuts that we're seeing in June, because the service already is like very, very difficult and poor. And I think that the different austerity narratives that we're seeing around the shortage of bus drivers, and also like the shortage of people to run the city council virtual meetings, it really does impact our lives when all you have to get around are the bus system, and then it just takes a huge cut out of your day. So thank you so much, and, what'd you say, and report?
Mary Jo. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mary Jo Bondi. I am a Scott Township resident. I don't live in the city, but we have, in the past, lived in the city. But I am currently on the 38C, and is being canceled completely during the weekday service cuts. And also, on Saturday, May 14th, my husband called Port Authority to find out about the buses running, and they, he said that there was, the person that said that there was a bus running at 12 o'clock. And at 12 o'clock, this was 11:45, at 12 o'clock, we called the bus to just check to see if it was, where it was, in the route, and they said, oh, that bus was canceled. And I said, excuse me? That bus was canceled. The driver didn't show up to ride, to do the, to do his route. And I said, well, that's, that's not good enough. We were expected to go to a craft show in Green Tree, and we were, so we had to walk three miles from our house to Green Tree, and then we asked for the bus to come back again, and we had to walk another three miles back because that bus wasn't, the only bus that ran that day was at 2:45, and that was it. And there are nursing homes all along Green Tree Road, and none of them, I don't know how the employees that ride the bus got to that stop, because none of them were there. There were two Indian foreign guys that went on our way to walk to, to the, to Green Tree. We saw at a stop further along, and they were on their way to work. They'd been waiting for two hours. So there was no bus from 10 o'clock till, till 12 o'clock when we met with them. And on the way back, there was no bus. And they're canceling them again with, with this cut. The 38C is also canceled completely, starting in June. And that's just not right. We've, we've been stuck in town. We've been, we've had to walk from Mount Lebanon to, to, if we wanted to go anywhere. And that, Port Authority is our public, is our, is our only form of transportation. We have no car. So I'm 66, and I think that's a lot for a 66-year-old person to, to walk three miles to an activity and three miles back. And I think that the council should at least try to get Port Authority to, to do their job. It's not, it's not the drivers, it's the, sorry, it's the, it's, it's the management of Port Authority.
Thank you. Thank you. Phil Bondi. Good morning. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record.
My name is Phil Bondi, and I'm the husband of Mary Jo who just spoke. I want to thank Madam President and the council members for listening and for your time. And I just wanted to, you know, address as well the need for public transit in the city of Pittsburgh. My wife mentioned about the two gentlemen on May 14th that, who were Indian, who were using translators to try to even understand us. They work at two pizza shops downtown here. So even though they live out our way, they're working in town. And we've also encountered other people, an incident of April 24th, in which at 2:00 in the afternoon, Port Authority assured me that the 7:35 bus out of town would be running, and then it gets to be 7:35 on Sunday, April 24th, and no bus. We wait 15 minutes or so, and it's like we're realizing there's not going to be a bus. The, we call, you know, my wife called the Port Authority police, and they said, oh, that bus was taken off schedule, even though at 2:00 in the afternoon, the customer service said, oh, that bus would be running. We need a better system of being able to determine, you know, what's running and what's not, you know, because, you know, influences, you know, that would have influenced the decision of my wife and me to, to go traveling over to the east end of Pittsburgh to, you know, an event. But it also, you know, these, but these cuts that have been going on, especially in the past couple of months, especially just abrupt out of the blue cuts, they, you know, they impact people, you know, you know, a great deal. And it's like, and they impact the businesses. The gentleman on May 14th, you know, like I mentioned, worked at two pizza shops downtown, they were late for work. Another woman that, you know, was also late for work, you know, taking the same, you know, a bus later that day. On April 24th, it's like a woman who works, you know, one of the people, there were 10 of us stuck in town that evening on April 24th. We had to go scramble for rides from either ride shares or, you know, family members. And the, you know, one of those people, you know, works up at Presbyterian Hospital. So this, these service cuts are affecting employers in the city, they're affecting employment in the city, and they have the potential to hurt the vibrancy of the city of Pittsburgh, which, you know, you were giving out the, the commendations earlier. So many people worked hard to keep the city vibrant. Let's keep that going with public, good public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. She's not in the audience. Millie Sass. She's not in the audience. Elena Zetsoff, not in the audience. And Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, in the audience.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Valles Hoover, Lincoln, Nebraska, and Kagali, Rwanda. Universities of Oxford, London, Pittsburgh. I'm a member of the American Mathematical Society, American Physical Society, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. We apply information and intelligence optimals from 21 primary disciplines to solve problems. We're never going to get cooperation from the Port Authority on this. The council and the Office of Mayor should establish an independent Pittsburgh transit company. I've said so repeatedly over the last five years. May 2022, week four of May, African Intelligence Week. Dr. Sylvester James Gates Jr., he was the recent, most recent president of the APS, a string theorist, a black African American. Another black African American, David Blackwell, is a mathematician, was a mathematician, the Raoul Blackwell theorem. 1965, he was the first African American, black African American to be admitted to the National Academy of Sciences, which I think was absurd, but I think constructive move. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is applying the best have the potential to hurt the vibrancy of the city of Pittsburgh, which, you know, you were giving out the, the commendations earlier. So many people worked hard to keep the city vibrant. Let's keep that going with public, good public transit. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. She's not in the audience. Millie Sass, she's not in the audience. Elena Zetsoff, not in the audience. And Dr. Ronaldin Miller in the audience.
Dr. Ronaldin Miller, Vales Hoover, Lincoln, Nebraska, and Kigali, Rwanda. Universities of Oxford, London, Pittsburgh. I'm a member of the American Mathematical Society, American Physical Society, Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024, globalintelligencesociety.org. We apply information and intelligence optimals from 21 primary disciplines to solve problems. Never going to get cooperation from the Port Authority on this. The council and the office of mayor should establish an independent Pittsburgh Transit Company. I've said so repeatedly over the last five years. May 2022, week four of May, African Intelligence Week, Dr. Sylvester James Gates Jr., who was the recent, most recent president of the APS, a string theorist, a black African American, another black African American, David Blackwell, is a mathematician, was a mathematician, the Raoul Blackwell theorem, 1965, he was the first African American, black African American to be admitted to the National Academy of Sciences, which I think was absurd, but I think constructive move. A concern of Pittsburgh Council is applying the best information and intelligence to solve Pittsburgh problems, often, in my view, via undisciplined counselor public commentary, I think we had some of that this morning, versus the time-delimited citizen public comment. You've got to change that. RLM informational intelligence accuracy and analytical clarity greater than 99% 2010 to 2022 in more than 550 city, county, public comments available in publication, greater than 10,000 emails and texts and more than 5,000 GIN, NIN transcripts. There is no other source in the city of Pittsburgh, repertorial source than myself in the city of Pittsburgh, coming from this platform. All RLM and public appearances are recorded and transmitted via the National Intelligence Information Network, which I founded, and worldwide via the Global Intelligence Information Network, which I also founded. On 3 May 2022, in my city council public comment, I repudiated the LEC Inclusionary Housing Zoning Resolution as pro-equity and anti-equality, as without math operationalization. Yes, the numbers matter. It's not all about numbers, as we heard over and over again this morning. But you don't have that in place. And as USC and PA unconstitutional. I said that Pittsburghers would sue the city 10 days over this. BAMP sued the city over the council and gaining approved EC ordinance, calling it unconstitutional. Now, where did they get that? Where did WTA get that?
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience who has not had a chance to address city council who would like to speak? Please come forward and just state your name and neighborhood for the record, please. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. My name's Tiara Collins. I'm actually here representing a couple neighborhoods, The Hill, Hazelwood, and Homestead. So first, I would like to talk about my daughter. My daughter is 28 years old. My daughter's on dialysis seven days a week. My daughter is currently in the process of being looked at to be on the transplant list for AGH. When my daughter cannot catch the 61C, or the 61D, or the 53L to get her to the North Side by 8:00 AM, she misses that appointment. When she misses that appointment, she's then looked at as she cannot make it to these appointments. So she's not a good candidate to be put on the transplant list. My daughter does not drive. She's not allowed to drive. So if I can't pick her up and take her to her appointments because my baby, who's 10 years Down Syndrome, has to be at school at 8:00 AM, something has to give. My baby needs to be able to make it to AGH, sometimes three times a week, sometimes five times a week. But it's imperative that she's on time. If she's not on time, it's been eight years. My baby needs a kidney transplant. She does her dialysis seven days a week. I've been down there with Port Authority, hollering at Catherine. I know a lot of you guys on this board, I've talked to y'all numerous times, and you guys have done everything y'all can. But at this point in time, I'm asking y'all to please step in. Like everybody said, if you do have to come up with your own bus system, maybe that may be what we need. I don't know what we need. But at this point in life, my baby needs a transplant, and I'm here begging you to help my baby make it to her appointments on time. I can't afford losing my child. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in The Hill District. First, I wanted to start off to Mr. Burbannick and also Fitzgerald. Both of them are elected official, and both of them at one time have disrespected me. Burbannick was trying to explain that when Shirley Jones came here, I went out and was talking to Shirley Jones. Here comes Sergeant Mark, get away from her, screaming and hollering. And I'm saying, who, what? And when I looked at the, in the evening, Burbannick was talking to her when she ran out and told me to get away from the movie store. Fitzgerald, my daughter was talking about working in Homestead, and there's mice coming under the door of senior citizens. And I go to, I found out it was Fitzgerald. And I say to Mr. Fitzgerald, Ms. Fitzgerald, can I, can I have a card? See, I'm telling you, I do not appreciate being treated like a second-class citizen. And that's what I am in this room. I am tired of being disrespected and talking down. I brought my grandchild down here, five years old. Mr. Burgess said that it was not the time and the place for her to speak. She's from a baby been watching city council know that we come down here and speak. She was very upset. I'm not going to have you tear her self-esteem down. She comes down to teach because you can learn from a child, but she comes to learn from you. That's what I brought her here for. And I have them to very respective children. I want to say this, and I'm trying to say it very fast. I teach them, from the way I talk, I know you instinct that I'm at home, I'm saying all type of things. But my grandbaby, I teach them how they're supposed to respect people. Now, we have the oldest one that's 10 now. She was seven when she came, nine when she came before. She has a speech impediment. But she's coming to me and she's saying, she's got smart with granddaddy. She call him the cuss N-word. The cuss N-word. Do you know what that is? We don't even say it. And I told my husband, I'm talking to him. I said, she called you the N-word. He said, what? She called me an N? I said, yes, she did. Because she thought you were being nasty and mean to her. And he did say he told her to get the H out of the room. That's a cuss word, too, that they're not allowed to say. They explained to me, Auntie said, we can listen to the cuss words, but we can't say them. So they thought that the N-word was one of the worst things that you could say. Because I taught them. But it's not because of color that you're a nigger. You know what to, what you, when you're a nigger?
Okay.
It's when you're a low-class person. Are you telling me I have to stop talking?
I'm saying, please use language.
Oh, oh, but you can, you can treat us like we are. But you can't better say that when you could say it. Listen, let me tell you something. N-I-G-G-E-A-R is a low-class person.
Your time has expired. Thank you. Is there any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 375, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program, the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $100,000 and Increasing Play Area Improvements by $100,000.
Councilman Cross, I'm sorry, Chair of Human Resources. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm standing for Council.
Councilwoman Cross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilman. Sorry.
No, Madam President. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cross presents Bill Number 376, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 661, entitled, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 432, Authorizing a Corporation Agreement with the City, the URA, and the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Provide for Future Shared Administrative Services and the Transfer of Property Among Agencies for Governmental Redevelopment and Portfolio Management Purposes by Providing for City Council Review of Policies and Procedures for the Pittsburgh Land Bank pursuant to 174A13D of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances to Authorize an Amendment to the Corporation Agreement. Bill Number 377, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CDBG Program, the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facilities by $808,090 and Increasing Major Developments by $808,090.
Thank you. And Councilman Cross, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam President.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 378, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Block and Associates LLC for Services Relating to Inemployment Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $9,800. Bill Number 379, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Maura Harrington in the Amount of $11,887.42 in Settlement of a Claim for Damaged Two Garages at the Rear of 256 through 258 Grove Street from a City ES Vehicle on November 11th of 2020.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 380, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, along with the Directors of the Department of Public Safety and Public Works, to Enter on behalf of the City into a lease, a lease agreement with WAG2 LLC for the property located at 510 McDonald Street for a cost not to exceed $1,085,550.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 381, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 540, which authorizes the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement and/or Amendment with Planet Technologies for Essential Support and Maintenance Services for the Continued Operations of City's SaaS E-mail and Data File Collaboration to Increase the Authorized Contract Amount by $99,000 to Continue SaaS E-mail and Data File Services from Planet Evolved to Access the Microsoft Library for Training, Reporting, and Customized Materials to Provide Office 365 and Azure Administrative and Managed Services Support and Provide a Block of Hours for Resolution of Microsoft Multi-Tenant Azure Issues. Bill Number 334, Communication from the City Council to the Zoning Administrator, notifying the Planning Commissions of Council's Intent to Extend the Deadline for Council to Hold a Public Hearing on Council Bill 2021-1913 Relating to Affordable Housing Impact Statements.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. We will now move on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? I need a motion to approve Bill 2022-0334. Madam Clerk, do you read that? You just read? Okay. And so that's under unfinished business.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only procedure. I just don't understand what we're doing, that's all.
Yeah. And we have the solicitor here as well to...
Yeah, it's okay. Councilwoman handle.
I'm just saying if you have questions.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Please.
So, all this piece of legislation does is recognize that we extended the time to hold a public hearing. The actual legislation, this is not the actual legislation. This simply is a procedure that allows us to extend the time of holding the public hearing. It will, we will have the, we will have the public hearing, and the original piece of legislation will come back before us for both standing committees and federal action. So we can do it this way, or we receive file.
Councilman, is that, are you okay with that?
Yeah. So do you have a sense when we'll actually schedule the public hearing?
Yes, oh sure, of course, yes.
But do we know approximately when we might be scheduling the public hearing? We don't.
Whatever the clerk, I'm...
Yeah, that's fine. I just question. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Okay. With a motion, we have a second. Is it a roll call or, or all in favor? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's approved. Thank you, Councilmen, both of you.
Thank you.
And our next order of business is committee, reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, we'll begin with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 371, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May 16th of 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 370, Resolution Transfer in a Total of $40,000 from the Parks Tax Trust Fund to the Special Events Trust Fund for the Purpose of Supporting Juneteenth-Related Activities or Celebrations.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Motion to amend the bill.
Motion to amend. Do we have a second? Any discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, this is an amendment that switches the, you know, where the money will come from. So this would effectively have it come from city council grants, donations, which is from our general fund.
Thank you, Councilman.
May I please?
Discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Councilman. I appreciate your introduction of the, of the amendment. There was some, everybody wants to support Juneteenth and believes it's, I can't think of the word I want. It, it values our support, absolutely. The question that some of us did have those, the account the money was coming from, and does it open further, you know, requests from other events that might be taking place to actually access the Parks Tax Fund? And it just kind of got a little messy. So this, I think this was an important amendment to make. I'm happy to support the amendment, happy to support the Juneteenth celebration, and appreciate Councilman Wilson putting forward this amendment to change the, the source of the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? I just want to thank you, Councilman Wilson, for also working to make sure you're supportive. The council was supportive of Juneteenth, such an important event for our city. But I also want to thank you for, and Jake Pollak, and our budget office, for all working together to make sure that it came out of a place that everybody felt a better level of comfort with the, with the process. So thank you very much. And it's going into the Special Events Trust Fund, which is...
Thank you.
So, all, okay. Any further discussion? The bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? What? I'll vote on the amendment first. I apologize. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The bill's amended. Now, you've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Was there any further discussion on any of the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage? Will vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bill having received the legally required number of votes has finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Do you, Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 372, Report of the Committee on Public Works for May 16th, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 335, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City to Enter Into an Agreement with Peoples Natural Gas Company to Provide a License for Relocated Natural Gas Pipelines and Necessary Accessories Within Certain Portions of Frick Park. Bill Number 336, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Maple Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $280,000. This Resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement and no costs to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 337, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Elizabeth Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $352,000. This Resolution serves as, serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement and no costs to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 338, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Corley Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $252,000. This Resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement and no costs to the city. to the city. Future Resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 339, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Calera Street Bridge Project, Providing for Payment Not to Exceed $312,000. This Resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement and no costs to the city. Future Resolutions will authorize the project-specific service agreements. Bill Number 340, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capital Budget and the 2022 CDBG Program and the 2022-2027 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Elizabeth Street Bridge by $352,000, Corley Street Bridge by $252,000, Maple Avenue Bridge by $280,000, and Calera Street Bridge by $312,000. Bill Number 347, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 948, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2004 Capital Budget and the 2004-2009 Capital Improvement Program so as to Change the McCardo Railway Deliverables." Bill Number 348, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 675, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2009 Capital Budget and Approving the 2009-2013 Capital Improvement Program so as to Change the McCardo Railway Deliverables." Bill Number 349, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 855, entitled, "Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and Approving the 2012-2017 Capital Improvement Program so as to Change the McCardo Railway Deliverable."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Was there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, which is Councilman Wilson, Committee on Land Use, I'm sorry, next to the last. Councilman Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 373, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 16, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 300, Resolution Promoting Affordable Housing in the City by Exploring the Expansion of Limited-Equity Housing Corporatives. Bill Number 346, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 606, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Agreement, Rental Assistance in Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services, and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with the 2020 Emergency Solution Grant, Funds Not to Exceed $1,216,133, and 2020 Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,140,292, by Amending Various Emergency Solution Grant Line Items, and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements."
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Was there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, I just want to just add to Councilwoman Gross and, and the bill that we all sponsored together regarding the housing cooperatives. I just want to say, if you look in Sheridan, one of the best and most safest housing that they have in the community is a housing cooperative. It's the Sheridan Part Co-op, and the house, the homes go for around $30,000. And it is, they're well-maintained, low-crime. It's something to really look into and, and see what a great job that they do there. And I hope that we can start delivering some of that type of housing for our residents in the city of Pittsburgh, because sometimes people don't want government to own their homes, they want the opportunity to own their homes, but they need to be able to afford it. And so this is one of those things that I think that would really be helpful. So thank you all for, for your sponsorship on this. Anything else from members? And thank you to those who serve on the Housing Authority Board, who also work with us on these things. Okay. The bills, seeing none of the further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on now to our last committee of the day, which is Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus, for Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 374, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 16, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 341, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soccer Facilities Plan for the North Shore Lot 10.2 Project.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Was there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Bills haven't received, the bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed, and that moves us on to our motions and resolutions. And I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold an executive session on Bills 308 and 343 as they relate to legal matters. Also, this afternoon at 2:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 223 as it relates to the Sidewalk Cafe zoning changes. Speaker registration closes at 12:00 p.m. today. Are you cheering that? Oh, I thought that was your thing. Okay.
No, uh, no.
Okay. Let me go.
Thank you, Madam President.
Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 25th at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our standing committees meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. Also tomorrow, Wednesday, May 25th at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1906 as it relates to zoning of the Oakland Crossing and Development. Speaker registration closes tomorrow afternoon at 12:00 p.m. You will cheer that?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus will cheer that. And also, on Thursday, May 26th at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 286 as it relates to inter, an intergovernment, intermunicipal liquor license transfer for Pasha Cafe. Registration will close on Thursday morning at 11:30 a.m. Whose is that area?
What is it again, Madam President?
Pasha Cafe. P-A-S-H-A. Pasha Cafe? Okay. Thank you. And the registration to speak at all the, at these meetings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Please be, be aware that due to staffing shortage in the, in our cable department, within the cable department, virtual attendance is unavailable for this week, for, for the meetings and the hearings. So you have to come in person if you want, if you want to speak, or you can email. If you, if you're unable to attend in person, but you would like to submit comments, please email them to thecityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. If you want to speak and cannot be here in person, please email your comments so that we're aware to cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Anything from members? Councilman?
Madam President, so there, there's some last-minute breaking news here on Wednesday's Oakland Crossing hearing. And the, the only reason I bring it up is that we are televised, and so it is going out. I, I just wanted to thank Deputy Mayor and OMB Director Jake Pollak for working with us and the clerk to find a way to be able to actually televise Wednesday's meeting, because it is so very important to be able to do it. And so I, I just want to say that we're working closely to, to be able to work through that issue, and I promise to keep you abreast of, of the changes as they happen, Madam President.
It'd be nice if the others kept me abreast, but thank you. Any, anything else from members? Anything else from members? Seeing nothing? Okay. So then can we have the motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting?
移到
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.[1713.53]